Just begin by taking a few breaths in through your nose and out through your mouth. And now you have done so much practicing, you've opened so much, you have learned so much. Just taking a moment to connect to that, connect to your breath. As we begin to warm up your body and slow down your mind, shifting your focus away from the external world into your own internal experience. Breathing in this continuous connected way. Invite you to begin to scan your body, looking for that place of internal resource. This place can be anywhere, the surface of your skin or somewhere deeper. But just looking for that place of comfort and connection. Any place that allows you to feel more of how you would like to feel. Place that when you find it, your mind settles and your breath is easier to follow. And when you find this place, go ahead and take a few full breaths right into it. Just noticing this place. Noticing the sensations that are pleasant or that feel resourceful. Imagine this balloon or this energetic ball and with each inhale you inflate and you connect to this place. Expanding, opening. And each exhale, just letting go. Softening. Just continuing to breathe, yeah. And as you start to connect to this resource and breathe more fully, maybe noticing some movement that starts to manifest. Yeah, waking up the body, yeah. Staying present, yeah. Tracking, breathing. This conscious connected breath is what charges our body, yeah. And just noticing the sensitivity as you start to breathe more fully. Remembering this water-like quality, yeah, and embodying this. Imagine this glass and you're filling it up with each inhale, starting at the base of your belly and emptying, starting at the top of your head. Just filling up and emptying, yeah, as movement arises, yeah. And getting into that spinal wave. Breathing fully, really opening up. Checking back in with your resource, yes, you continue to explore. Filling with each breath, opening, exhaling, softening, letting go. When you're ready, I invite you to bring your attention to the area around your eyes and your forehead, your ocular belt. Your eyes can be closed. Just continuing to breathe here. Maybe you'll find you want to open your eyes and make some of those eye movements, either left and right, keeping your head still, or moving in that circular motion with your eyes while keeping your head still. Yeah, just continuing to breathe, inflating this area, breathing right into it. Getting to explore, maybe bringing your massage to your temples or your scalp, yeah. Using your felt sense, your bioenergy and your breath to guide you. Full breath, each inhale, inflating, opening, expanding this area. And each exhale, surrendering, letting go. Using your touch to go deeper. While remembering breath is our primary due element and at any point you get stuck or your breath becomes shallow, you need to just tend to that. Feel free, yeah, you can always go back and include the touch. Just getting into this area, staying present, noticing what movements your body wants to do, yeah. Notice where you're holding tension, yeah. And just continuing to support that and exhaling and surrendering and letting go. No need to force anything, yeah. Meeting the body, using your felt sense. Now I'll invite you to shift your attention to your jaw into this oral belt, yeah. Ah, maybe you want to stretch your face a little, ah, take off the mask, make some head circles, yeah. Take some full breaths, yeah. Noticing your lips and your jaw, yeah. Breathing fully right into this area. Yeah, using your touch to support and go deeper. Using that movement, that undulating, yeah. Maybe involving your eyes and your entire face, yeah. And starting to get the back of your neck or your throat involved. Just continuing to breathe, continuing to explore. Continuing with these deep full breaths, yeah. You want to create movement and space and opening in our body little by little, yeah. Really gradual, working with the resistance, working with the areas of tension, yeah. As well as embodying and working with that water-like quality and that fluidity and that movement, yeah. Exploring your TMJ and your masseter. You want to bring some like body work to your ears and do some gentle pulling down into the sides. Maybe you want to massage behind your ears. Continuing to use breath as the primary component as you allow movement and sound and touch to support. Maybe inviting some sighs on your next few exhales. Yeah, sending your breath right into this area, right into your jaw and your throat, inflating it and exhaling, letting go. Now working the SCM, the sternopelvis mastoid, this big bulky muscle that helps you turn your head. Yeah, maybe exploring one side with two hands, yeah. Again, using your felt sense, your breath to guide you. As we continue to open up. Support the letting go, creating space, yeah. Creating this opening of these channels for energy and breath to flow, yes. We just consciously connected and breathe. Visually inflating your neck and placing your hands. Taking a moment to slow a little bit before breathing more fully and getting back into that deeper touch, yeah. Can pendulate within the practice, within the activation. Yeah, I'm using this conscious connected breath. Allowing sighs to arise. Yeah. Really inflating, opening, letting go, softening. If you see yourself, feel yourself dissociating, just noting that and going back to your breath. Filling the glass with each inhale and emptying it with each exhale. Taking a little bit longer to just explore this oral area, your jaw, your neck, your throat, your clavicle, including your top of your head, your scalp, your forehead, your eyebrows, your under eye. Letting go of touch and just fully inflating and fully breathing. Really opening up this channel, yeah. Really using conscious connected breath to support this opening. Allowing this natural flow of your energy. Keep inflating your body from the inside, surrendering with each exhale. When you're ready. Just starting to slow down. Starting to take longer, fuller, slower breaths. Prolonging your exhales. Shifting your attention back to your resource, yeah. Because you're aware of the felt sensations that have been brought up to the surface, yeah. Taking a moment to really allow self to come into stillness as you track activation, as you notice other layers, yeah, as you feel more sensitive. But just allowing self to really slow. The next few rounds on the inhale, asking yourself, "How can I support myself today?" And on the exhale, surrendering, letting go, waiting, seeing, getting curious about what your body has for answers. Blank is normal and fine, yeah. Just creating that space, yeah. To let your body provide you with some wisdom. Stepping into your power for the rest of today's practice. Whenever you're ready. Begin by just taking some conscious connected full breaths right into your resource, checking in. Fighting this full breath and visualizing this glass, inflating, filling the glass with each inhale. And exhaling, emptying the glass from the top down with each exhale. And once again, bringing in that deeper, fuller, conscious connected breath. This time right into this thoracic area, right into your heart center, your chest. Begin by creating some movement with your arms and opening up with each inhale. Bringing your arms back towards your core with each exhale. Expanding, opening up, yeah. Really starting to breathe into this thoracic channel. Expanding in all directions, letting go, yeah. Maybe including the jaw and the neck and the ocular belt, stretching your face as you just continue to breathe fully, yeah. Maybe creating some circular movement in your shoulders. Each inhale, inflating, filling the glass, each exhale, letting go. And while we work with this thoracic region, you can imagine a shorter glass. You can imagine the base of the glass and it stops right at the top of your sternum. Instead of filling from there and emptying, yeah. So it's just this shorter glass, shorter breaths, but still in this conscious connected way, yeah. Deeply, fully breathing, opening up. Allowing yourself to sigh. Yeah, allowing this movement to naturally arise, yeah. Breathing into your chest, inflating from the inside, opening, expanding, exhaling, letting go, softening. Yeah, maybe you want to bring some touch to your chest, yeah. Movement, yeah. Maybe you're feeling your pelvis or your lower body starting to get involved and just including this. Including arm movements and neck circles. Really using your felt sense, your breath, your energy, yeah, to flow through you in this natural way. Opening the channels to allow this flow to continue to open in a gradual way. Deep full breaths. Inflating, opening, exhaling, surrendering, yeah. Maybe you want to let some movement arise and shake it, yeah. Maybe you need to let your lips jiggle. And you need to bring some supportive touch to a place that feels extra activated as you continue to breathe right into your chest. Maybe you need to drop everything and just go back to this conscious connected breath for a few rounds. Really inviting that flow to happen naturally from connecting to your breath. Breath is movement. And you now opening, inflating, encouraging, exhaling, surrendering, letting go. When you're ready, I'll invite you to shift your attention to your diaphragmatic region and you can place your hands on one on each side. With each inhale, inflating. With each exhale, gently squeezing the rib cage. Now beginning to create more movement into your entire rib cage. Maybe you start to feel some cracking, maybe you start to feel some opening through your back body, yeah. Just continuing to breathe, inhaling, inflating, opening, exhaling, letting go, gently touching, squeezing the rib cage. Exploring and pressing, yeah. Getting into this whole region, yeah. You can move your hands up the diaphragm or down, you can begin to explore the back body. Noticing with each breath, you are creating more volume, more flexibility, yeah. This gradual way, yeah, just keep breathing, keep exploring. Keep sending breath right into this region. Notice how it feels to have your diaphragm contract and soften. Continuing to explore. Continuing to breathe. When you're ready, dropping the touch, just bringing up the charge. Do a little bit higher, a little bit faster. Yeah, allowing this freedom, allowing for movement to arise, yeah. Supporting this undulating, yeah. It's full of breath, opening, yeah. Kind of going to a peak activation, starting to feel tingles, maybe you need to tap yourself, maybe you need to shake a little. As you just continue to breathe, yeah, really opening, really letting self channel. Bring up charge, yeah. Breathing into this whole upper body, all the areas we've worked. And whenever you're ready. Gradually slowing it down. Allowing self to surrender and undulate and move, yeah. Letting go as you feel into your lightness, yeah. Feeling into your entire system. Allowing your breath to slow and prolong as you continue to surrender and let go. Tracking. With each inhale. Opening, softening, with each exhale. Slowing down, tapping into your resource. Coming into stillness, to just observe, to see what information your body has for you. As you continue to create space and offering support right here, right now. We are ending, but all that you are experiencing is welcome. To move on, to move out. To move out. To move out.